Ms. Brown.
Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Glendale Planning Commission. Today's date is March 16, 2016, Wednesday. The time is 5:05. Roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners Astorien.
Reluctantly here.
Landrigan.
Present.
Manukian. Shahbazian.
Here.
And Chairperson Lee.
Here. And Ms. Staudler, would you do the introduction of a new planning commissioner?
Yes, we have, as you know, Eric Yossaien resigned from the commission a few months ago, and Councilman Aaron Adarian appointed Ms. Talin Shabazian to replace him. So I'd like you to welcome Ms. Talin Shabazian. She'd like to tell you a little bit about her background.
Thank you. Hello, all. I first wanted to say it's truly an honor to be able to serve my city and very excited to work with the commissioners and the staff. A little about myself, I am actually a planner. My background is I have a bachelor's degree in urban planning and a master's degree in urban planning and engineering, civil engineering, from Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. I currently work with Los Angeles Air Force Base as a senior planner. I've been living in Glendale for a little over seven years. I am honored to call it my home and again, looking forward to working with the staff and commissioners.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So we actually have a planner in our commission. So watch what we say.
Planner. So if I may, Mr. Chair, Ms. Shabazian, your background is stellar. You're welcome.
Thank you.
On our commission, and I'm positive that you will bring a lot of value to the table.
I appreciate it.
So we're looking forward to picking those value bits bit by bit as we go forward.
Sounds good.
Wonderful.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Landrigan?
I'd like to welcome you. You fill us out beautifully, and it's nice to have another woman. And I used to be a planner, and it's nice to have another planner. Welcome.
Thank you.
Qualified woman.
A very qualified woman.
Yes, so, well, the same goes with me. We are honored to have you onboard.
Thank you, sir.
So we have a full commission now. It's great. Can we have a report regarding posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, March 9, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Can we have Commissioner Sebastian Aldeas in the pledge?
You asked me, right, Mr. Chair?
New Commissioner.
Oh.
(laughing). (inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Did I surprise you a little bit?
Oh, I didn't even hear my name.
Oh, it's all right.
That's okay.
Can we get the minutes approval for March 2?
So moved.
Meeting?
So, 2.
Okay, so we have motion and then support. So minutes has been approved. Next item on the agenda is oral communication. I do not see any, so move on to the next item, which is the consent calendar item for 2284 Honolulu Avenue. It's a Starbucks coffee shop, and we, the Planning Commission, continue the project today from previous meeting and ask staff to prepare findings for a motion to deny the project, and we do have a new motion. So can we have Ms. Staudler?
Yeah, we did, if you'll see on the dais, we have an updated motion. Changes were made just to increase the amount of facts that were in it. Our committee reviewed it, and they asked us to add more information regarding what some of the findings for, that were, and conditions that were part of the original parking reduction permit. That was one of the issues you heard at the previous meeting, so we did add additional facts about that. Basically, when that parking reduction permit was heard, the peak hour that was considered for the Starbucks was in the morning, not during a peak hour in the evening when restaurants also competed for shared parking. So that, we've added additional information on that. They also, our attorneys also asked us for additional information regarding the visibility. We have the baristas essentially sitting at the back of the shop, yet they would be serving at the back of the shop and also patrolling or having control over alcohol sales outside in the patio. And testimony is given that that would be difficult for someone to see and to adequately make sure that the alcohol rules are being followed. So that has also been added to the motion. And then with that, we feel that these are complete findings, and we believe they are a true record of your recommendation at the previous meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Staudler. Yes, Commissioner Landrigan?
I move that upon review and consideration of all materials and exhibits of current record relative to administrative use permit case number PAUP 1518910 located at 2284 Honolulu Avenue, where after having conducted an appeal hearing on said matter on March 2, 2016, that the Planning Commission hereby reverses the planning hearing officer's decision dated December 10, 2015, and denies said administrative use permit case number PAUP 1518910 in accord with revised findings below as stated.
So if I second this, can we have a discussion about it?
Yes.
Second.
So I have a motion and support. So you wanted to discuss?
Yes, a couple of things. The redline version that was just handed to me, I think it behooves us to read it in public record. I know it's going to be public record, but for the sake of everybody that's here or watching us. And then I have a question about item number three under consideration required for applications involving the sale, serving, or consumption of alcoholic beverages, 30.49.0301.
I don't have a redlined version.
Yeah, this is why I wanted to be read.
Okay.
At any rate, let me...
But why do you have one?
I just got it. I asked for it. I just got it, so...
Can we ask staff to read that into the record then?
Right. And my question here is the following. In the redline version, it's added, "While there are similar restaurant uses within the Montrose Shopping Park area that currently serve alcoholic beverages, Starbucks differs from the other restaurants because it has a high concentration of youth patrons that frequent the location compared to other restaurants in the year." That's the red line that has been added.
On page 3?
Right. Well, item number three under considerations required for applications involving the sale of alcoholic beverages. Starbucks is a fast food restaurant if it is going to be a restaurant at all. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so it needs to be changed to a fast food restaurant as opposed to other restaurants. And then the second thing that I want to make sure, and we brought this up last time, and I, now, a lot of testimony was heard on it, that this in no way or shape or form is going to affect full-service restaurants that serve alcoholic beverages, whether it's beer or wine or anything else. So I didn't see that anywhere in this redline versions, and I don't know if it's necessary for us to add that. I'll leave that to discretion of the city attorney. What I don't want to do is the following, that I understand there's 30 versus 31 top-line alcoholic beverage licenses that are issued in that area, but what I don't want to do is if a restaurant opens up and wants to serve alcohol, for us to have the same kind of issues that we had with Starbucks. Starbucks is not considered, it's not by this commissioner, a restaurant, so...
Points well made. So can we have that read into the record as you requested?
I mean, I'll leave that to the discretion of the city attorney. If she thinks that what we have is enough as far as having other restaurants being able to serve, well, full-service restaurants being able to serve alcoholic beverages, I'm okay with it. If not, clarification would be apt.
Members of the Planning Commission, we can certainly add the word "fast food" after the word, before the word "restaurant" in the sentence that Commissioner Astorien read, and I think that might help to clarify. If you would like the word "fast food" to be inserted before all instances of restaurant in the motion, we can also do that, whichever you prefer.
Well, and I would just add that when we make these findings, we make them specifically for each use that's subject to conditional use permit or an AUP. And so just because you would have findings for a Starbucks doesn't mean Starbucks is like other restaurants. And so I would just say that, no, we do tailor them. Just like you tailored this decision, we would tailor any future one that would come in. Just obviously, if you go by the rules that just say, oh, if you're over-concentration, then you should be denied. Well, that's not what Glendale does. We look at each use as it comes and take, observe it on its own merit. So in terms of, would this be precedent-setting? It may be precedent-setting for another coffee shop that wants to come in. However, if it's a full-service restaurant, no, it's clearly that this is not a full-service restaurant. This only applies to fast food that would be on a corner that's primarily aimed, has many uses that are aimed at basically kids, youth, and then also that have this characteristic of this restaurant. One of the main issues that we heard from residents and even teenagers is that the site of this, the way this building is sited, the way this store is sited, there is a lack of visibility outside where people would want to sit, where people do sit. And that was a large concern with the residents. You have a lot of youth in the area, you have an outdoor patio that will not be well policed by staff just based on the design of the building. And so that is something that wouldn't necessarily carry over to a new use if it came in. So I think, I mean, I understand your concern, but I don't think in this case we would be setting a precedent against any future restaurant from going into Montrose.
So Commissioner Astorien?
So I appreciate the generosity of inserting "fast" in front of the restaurant in paragraph number three under considerations, but I would feel much more at ease if there is also language, that this language does not affect full-service restaurants.
I think we can add that, commissioners, and I just, Mr. Kraus just pointed out that it may not be accurate to say that there are similar fast food restaurants in the Montrose Shopping Park area that currently serve alcoholic beverages. That actually might not be an accurate statement, so there are other instances in the motion where Starbucks is referred to as a fast food restaurant. However, I don't, I think it would be an easy fix to add a sentence somewhere appropriately to clarify that this does not apply to other full-service restaurants.
Commissioner Landrigan?
I was going to say that I agree with Commissioner Astorien's comments. I also have, I don't know if it's appropriate to put that in there because I don't know if that is what we discussed at the meeting, that this would not apply to other fast food restaurants. It may have been a concern, I think what we stated, and I certainly can be disabused of this notion, that we, there were other restaurants that were coming in that were full service that we knew would be applying probably, and we mentioned certain sites within Montrose. I didn't recall it being part of the motion, so that is my recollection. So if we want to do that, I think we might want to amend the motion that way.
And so, Mr. Chair, in response to Commissioner Landrigan, specifically, I asked the folks that were making testimony that day that whether or not they will be as vociferous about the sit-down restaurant or the full-service restaurant if they were serving, and time after time, at least three or four times, the testimony was, no. This is not considered a restaurant. Indeed, you and I looked at each other and said, we were surprised that this is considered or...
A fast food restaurant.
As a fast food restaurant, correct?
Yes.
And then the question propped up that, what's next? Would Carl's Jr. start serving beer and wine? And that's something that this commissioner would not want to do anything with at all. Nonetheless, you know, if the city attorney is okay that this is indeed now going to be affecting other sit-down or full-service restaurants, I'm okay with your judgment, so...
I don't think this will be a precedent. As Ms. Staudler pointed out, I don't think it will.
So then why don't we, you know, we have the motion and then support, so now will the Commissioner Landrigan have to revise to include these comments, or can we just ask to include this, you know, reflect these concerns and revise the language?
I think, Mr. Chair, if the city attorney is fine with the language, then the only insertion is the word "fast" in item number three, in item number three under considerations as opposed to just a restaurant, and I'm okay with that.
So am I.
Yes?
If that's an accurate statement, I'm not, I've been told by Mr. Kraus that that might not be, so I would defer to...
On number three?
Yes, correct.
Could you read it out and tell us why?
I'm trying to figure out which, because there's a couple instances in that paragraph where it talks about restaurants.
We're looking at the red line, right?
You are.
I don't think you are, Eric.
Now, if we're looking at this, right here, when it says, "While there are similar restaurant uses within the Montrose Shopping Park area that currently serve alcohol beverages," I'm not sure if we do have other similar types of restaurants to Starbucks that serve alcohol.
Exactly. That's exactly why. And number one, that, and number two, if Starbucks is considered as a fast food restaurant, they're the category of fast food restaurant, then it needs to be noted that it is a fast food restaurant. And really, Starbucks is not a restaurant. It's either a restaurant or a fast food restaurant or a coffee shop. I mean, I don't know how that goes, so...
Can I comment on that?
That sentence is slightly misleading there because there is no other restaurants that are, you know, similar uses that serve alcoholic beverages.
I believe the intent, the reason why it was written the way it is, because I did partake in writing that portion, is because what was trying to be conveyed is that there are fast food restaurants in that area in general. Whether this particular Starbucks is perceived as one or not, the way the code is written, this is categorically a fast food restaurant, and therefore, that's why it was written that way. It doesn't mean that there are other similar coffee shops, and maybe that was probably the best way to describe it. However, what was trying to be conveyed again is the fact that it is a fast food restaurant, there are other fast food restaurants in that area. For example, Season Alley. Season Alley is a fast food type restaurant where you approach the counter, which is actually within close proximity. You approach the counter, you place your order, you sit down. That is, there's more than eight seats. That's considered a fast food restaurant. So they are both comparable in the sense that they're both fast food restaurants, counter type restaurants.
So, Mr. Leader, Starbucks is categorized as a fast food restaurant, correct?
Yes.
So why don't we just, as we discussed before, call it, while there are similar fast food restaurant uses with the Montrose Shopping Area? And I agree to the insertion of the word "fast," and that's what we're asking. The rest, I am deferring to your judgment, city attorney, that this is not going to affect full-service restaurants. That's all.
Yes, Ms. Landrigan?
Does Season Alley serve alcohol?
I don't think so.
So saying there are similar uses that...
But I just threw that as an example in terms of the number of seats.
Alcohol. That's the, that's where I think the misunderstanding is. So if, I mean, I think there's several ways to look at it. While there are restaurant uses within the Montrose Shopping Area that currently serve alcohol, which is a true statement, Starbucks differs from the other restaurants, first of all, because it's a fast food restaurant, and also it has a high. So that might be a more accurate sentence to have in here.
As opposed to while there are similar restaurant uses?
Correct.
I purposely omitted the word "fast food" in that particular instance.
No, and I think we don't have to put it in the first one, but I think in the second half, is where it becomes the distinctive difference, is that it's a fast food restaurant, and it also has a high youth client.
Agreed.
I agree.
Excuse me from, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. If you look at the last sentence on item three, it talks about, it says, "Alcoholic beverage control does not require food service at a tavern, but a restaurant with a type 41 license does require beer service and wine." I wonder if we add "fast food" to that one, then it's clear that we're not, that's precise what we're talking about, and I think that addresses Commissioner Astorien's issue.
But I don't think type 41 deals with fast food restaurants or...
Any more than any other.
It does with the...
Over one or the other.
Yeah.
Well, it talks about a restaurant, but it requires them to serve food, so I think that's kind of the distinction that we decided that Starbucks wasn't considered fast food as far as a type 41, or restaurants as far as a type 41, because they don't serve as much food as the bona fide restaurant definition would require.
Mr. Chair, but, Mr. Kraus, you know, under our ordinances, Starbucks is categorized as fast food restaurant.
Correct.
So we need to address it as such. Look, the only reason that this is coming up is very simple, because there was testimony from the folks that they have no issues with restaurants, full-service restaurants serving alcoholic beverages. The issue here was of two or three things. Number one, the impact on the parking. Number two, the control of who's serving and who's drinking the alcoholic beverage at Starbucks. And number three, the idea that, you know, it's a, really, it's a coffee shop as opposed to a tavern. And the fourth that I brought up was the following, that eventually this commission will take up the issue that, at least in my opinion, that this, a fast food restaurant should not be able to serve alcoholic beverages in areas that is detrimental to the surrounding. That's what it was. So, you know, I don't want to make, belabor the issue, you know, just insert the "fast" and we're done.
In the second sentence, the way we propose it so that it's not similar restaurants, but restaurants that serve and then fast food, and the dilemma I have with addressing Mr. Kraus, the alcoholic beverage control issue is, if it's not correct, this could invalidate it, and I don't think that that's something we want to address. Because if it's faster food or slow food, you know, there's the slow food movement too, and next thing you know, we're going to have all sorts of restaurants, Whole Foods. Now we have that.
So, Ms. Manukian, now with this discussion, does Commissioner Landrigan have to re-introduce the motion with the corrections?
My understanding, just to clarify, is that the motion should be reintroduced with the addition of Commissioner Landrigan's corrected sentence, which is on page four, starting with, "While there are similar restaurant uses within the Montrose Shopping Park area that currently serve alcoholic beverages, Starbucks differs from the other restaurants because it is a fast food restaurant and it has a high concentration of youth patrons that frequent this location compared to the other restaurants in the area." I believe that change is both factually accurate and addresses the concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Manukian. So can we have a motion again?
I move the motion previously stated with that change.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Roll call.
And I would just point out that our new commissioner, Ms. Shabazian, didn't have a chance to view the previous meeting in completion, so she will not be voting on this item.
Thank you for that clarification. Roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners Astorien.
Yes.
Landrigan.
Yes.
Chairperson Lee.
Hi.
Commissioner Shabazian will abstain.
Abstain.
Mr. Chair, can we have a recess for 60 seconds so I can excuse myself from the rest of the meeting?
Yes, Commissioner Astorien is under the weather and not feeling well, so we'll take a one-minute recess so that we can have Commissioner Astorien courageously exit.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Welcome back. We're back from the recess, and for Project 2284 Honolulu Avenue Starbucks Coffee Shop, the decision has been made by this commission, and under the provisions of chapter 2.88 of the Glendale Municipal Code, any individual not satisfied with the commission's decision may file an appeal to the city council. This is done by filing an notice of appeal along with a filing fee at the Building and Safety Division Permit Services Center located at 633 East Broadway, Room 101, Glendale, California. Any appeal must be filed within 15 days following the actual date of such decision, which is tomorrow, so March 17.
Yeah, that's when the 15-day starts.
Okay. So with that said, we'll move on to the next item, item number eight, zoning appeals. Under new business or old business, I don't see any, so we move over to item number nine, planning commission items. Under new business, we have 625 South Pacific Avenue, so tentative tract number 73585, PTTMM CP 1517391. Can we have a staff report, please?
Chairman, planning commissioners, the case before you is tentative tract number 73585 for a project located at 625 South Pacific Avenue. The proposal is to subdivide a new 27-unit multifamily residential project, which is currently under construction, into new condominium units. The existing zoning is industrial, commercial, residential, mixed use. The site is approximately 15,000 square feet, is 100 linear feet along Pacific Avenue and 150 feet deep. The site does not abut any residential zones for purposes of calculating the density and the height. The project received final entitlements from the city council in May 2014, including approval of the design review combined stage one and two, as well as a conditional use permit to develop the multiple... permit to develop the multiple dwelling units in the industrial, commercial, residential, mixed-use zone. A parking exception to permit tandem parking, which is not permitted by right outside of the DSP area, and to allow for 7D parking spaces when 74 parking spaces are required by code, was approved by the community development director on May 13th, 2014. City council also adopted the negative, the final negative declaration, which was prepared for the original 27-unit condominium project. The project is served by all existing public and private utilities and complies with all of the zoning requirements with the approved parking exception. An all-industrial project is consistent with the city's intent of promoting infill residential development near major transportation hubs and lines, and along existing commercial locations such as San Fernando Road. And again, this project is located on South Pacific, one block north of San Fernando Road, which has most of the city's and, and regional transportation lines. The project complies with all 10 elements of the general plan as outlined in your staff report and in the motion. Staff recommends approval of this tentative tract map for new condominium purposes, along with the 34 conditions that were included in your motion and spelled out in the staff report. That concludes a very brief presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for the staff? Yes?
Thank you. Ms. Matias, I have a question. Does the guest parking need to be available outside of a locked door?
It does not, but you'd have to have access in order to call the tenants and allow them to provide access into the, the subterranean garage.
Okay. That was my question.
Any other questions?
Okay, so we're open to the public. Can we have Mr. Hayek Marde Rosian?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'd like to welcome Ms. Shabazian, new member of the board. I'd like to go over the project.
Can you again state your name for the-
Yes, my name is Hayek Marde Rosian. I'm tract engineer. My address is 1545 North Verdugo Road, number two, Glendale.
Thank you.
I'd like to go over the project a little bit. This project was approved, as staff mentioned, back in 2004 by city council, and finally, we were able to pull the building permit in 2015, and currently, building is under construction. This project is for 27 units with a five-story building over two semi-subterranean parking, with 7D parking spaces provided for the tenants and guests. Each unit, we will get two parking assigned to it, with additional seven parking spaces for the guests, and we have additional nine spaces that hasn't been assigned to the units yet. The building was approved, as I said, back in 2015, and it's under construction, and we have all the conditions met already by building department and the zoning, and we are in compliance with most of the, all of the conditions. And we accept all the conditions as staff recommended, and we would like to have your blessing also. If you have any question, I'd be more than happy to answer it.
Any questions for Ms. Rivera?
No. I would like to say, I think it's a very nice design. I like the breezeway. I like your open space. It's quite attractive, and I think you've done a very nice job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Questions?
Actually, I have to agree, and actually having that close to the public transportation makes it very-
Adorable.
Adorable.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have Mr. Francisco Rivera. Come up to the podium.
I'm sorry, my English is not very good, but I got to try. I am here because I-
State your name.
My name is Francisco Rivera. And I am here because I got a letter from here about that project. I am the neighbor, I am the owner, the next door, and my, I, I don't care if they build wherever they want. My problem is, they build it under the, the city rules, and they don't violate my rights. And my, my problem is, I don't want to have problems now and in the future with my, with my property. Because they make a big, big hole, they, they make a two, two parking space underground, and this is my problem, that, that I don't want to have problems with my property in the future. I don't know if you understand me.
No, we understood. Yeah, whenever you have a big hole next to you, yes, you're concerned, yes.
Yeah.
Any comments?
What is your address?
Six, six 17.
Six 17. Are you in the back? You're the one that closed, or in the front? Okay, north.
Yeah.
Correct. I believe this would be the property, if you're looking at the, the map, it would be directly to the north of the project site.
Thank you. Thank you.
May I actually, what is the use on your property?
For me?
What is the use on your property?
There are two units.
Okay. So, is it residential use?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Don't see any more public cards, so we'll close the public comments. And if you don't have any more questions for the staff, we're going to deliberation.
Well, did you want to have a rebuttal?
Do you want to have a rebuttal?
A rebuttal?
You can-
Oh, for his comments?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I see the concern of the neighbor, anytime that you have a property that the next door is going two stories semi-subterranean, might be some problem. But due to the process of building permit and getting the plans planned checked and providing all type of shoring, the plans are already being looked at by building officials, and they are already being approved. And I don't see any problem that it will cause the next-door neighbor to sunk. But it's, it's a construction, anything can happen, and we will try to minimize the damage as much as we can due to process of the codes and all those.
Thank you. Any comments? Okay. We need to, we can close the public hearing.
You can close the public hearing?
Thank you.
We'll close the public hearing again, and we're going to deliberation. Would you like to go first?
I actually think it's a very interesting project, and I need to-
Speak into the microphone.
Yes.
The motion is within the-
Yes, I'm trying to actually, thank you.
It's right within the thing. It took me a while to find it.
There you go. I, um, planning commissioner, finding commission member, I'm considering tentative tract number 73585. After reviewing the records, files, reports, and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to set tentative tract, that tentative tract number 73585 is hereby approved, subject to compliance with the State Subdivision Map Act, Chapter 16.16 and 16.24 of Title 16 of the Glendale Municipal Code, Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code, and the 34 additional conditional, conditions listed below, and the planning commission hereby makes each and all of the following findings as fact.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners Landrigan-
Aye.
Shabazian-
Aye.
Chairperson Lee.
Aye, with a 4-3-2-0 passes. Next item on the agenda is, uh, community development department updates.
You should have received the Form Economics 700, and you'll just want to make sure that you have that filled out and submitted. I believe it goes to the city clerk. And you'll want to, there's a time limit on that.
April 1st is the deadline.
April 1st.
Comments from Commissioners?
Ms. Stotler, would you be able to talk to the fellow who presented it, so you can explain to him?
Yes, I'll be with you.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Again, welcome to planning commission, Commissioner Shabazian. And, you know, this is your, what do you, what do you call it?
May-
Meeting, inaugural meeting. So, welcome, and looking forward to working with you in the future commission meetings. So, looking for motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Okay.